Good evening, welcome to our interview tonight with Malani Alameda. He's a candidate for county council district three, conducting our interview tonight is Clara Mason. Before we start the interview, a little bit about Huli pack. Huli pack was birthed from a shared drive to rework our system by seeking Ina based equity focused leadership for Hawaii island community. Now more than ever, we need leaders who are willing to circle back to our roots and instill real change in our community from Kona to Kaua to Hilo to Havi. The timing is now to Huli the system. Conducting our interviews tonight is Clara Mason. And why don't we start out Malani by letting you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Hello Jeff and Mike, um Clara. Yeah, my name is Darcy Alameda. Most people know me by Malani. My Hawaiian name that my family calls me. I'm running for said Hawaii county council district three, which is Panaeva, Keokah and Waikiauca. And a few short ways down to Kaloli. I'm a generational district three resident. We've been here since we can, as far as we gone back to Keavie, which is most of you know, first thing of this island. Um, I'm a business owner, small business owner, been for 12 years now. I teach agriculture in at Keokah elementary school. Been teaching agriculture for 20 years. I'm a coach, been coaching since 1996, multiple sports. I've coached football, then I moved on to canoe canoe paddling. Then I've also moved to soccer with Nahua Puna. Which I'm the president there, president sit on the board. And now I'm back coaching canoe paddling at Navaha Hanakai. Um, Navaha Hanakai is an educational community organization, we're not, they're so called canoe club. We operate out of Hilo Bay, right there, fronting bayfront and the Waikiki area. So, um, yeah, I've been an educator since I graduated high school. Been working teacher's aid and until I was able to go to college myself and find me a permanent position here in my own community, Keokah. Um, I teach I teach sustainable gardening, I don't want to call it farming because we keep everything on small scale. Something that you can take home, the kids can take home and do in their back, own backyard with their own families. Yeah, that's me and a
Thanks so much, Malani. Um, so with all that background, what has sparked your interest and inspired you to now be running for county council?
Um, like I said, the generational, generational residency and every single change I've seen since I've been alive. Yeah, there's so much, there's so much to say Clara, like you said, but um being a father has to be probably the biggest priority. I have three children, 17, 13 and 10. And I want to make sure, you know, our community can connect to our government. And as long as I can remember, I haven't seen that, you know, administration and residents hardly see, hardly ever hardly ever get to meet on a, you know, eye to eye level, I want to say, yeah, or more. So yeah, it has to be the disconnect, you know, the disconnect between government and community. It's just, it's way too far gone, I feel like I seen. Yeah, way too much issues that we as residents haven't been able to take part in.
So Thank you, thank you, Malani. Joining us now as our second interviewer is Michaela Pucci. Did you want to start off with a question, Michaela?
Yeah, sure. I apologize for my tardiness. I was having some technical difficulties, but I'm here now. Um, I was wanting to know, and I don't know if this has already been asked, but how have you advocated for your community? And are there any particular community projects that you've worked on that you're proud of or would like to share? Or you think might influence your term if you're elected?
I advocated for my community. Oh man, I could go on and on. Like I said, I've been involved in the future, in the future of this, my community, which stems from Waikiki Kai to Keokah and Panaeva. And now, well, for the past eight years, also in Puna, because that's where my, my children go to school at, Navaheo Kalaniapu. Hawaii immersion charter school, you guys familiar with that? Yeah, um I've advocated for ancient Hawaiian double haul sailing, you know. Sailed for 10 years with Polynesian voyaging society and just let's say, trying to put it into words. We've done multiple Why will the ocean first gathers? It's a free event, yeah, everything from surfing, swimming, fishing, fish pond restoration. Uh, it's so much, you know, we've done backyard gardening for, for multiple families here. And we've been doing it for so long now. It's, when talking advocacy is pretty much the way I move is I'm advocating all day. I, hard to put into words, you know, it's taking care of, like I said, taking care of the youth is, was always my, my priority. And for me, that was because that stems from not having that sort of mentorship when I was, when I was a youth, yeah? It was, it was far it was far and in be, way far and in between where we could have opportunities to, to pursue your passion. My passion was always the land. Instilled in me from, from my dad and my grandfather and so yeah, advocate on the land out there.
On that note, Malani, um, thank you for that answer. On that note, advocating for the land. Um, what, what areas around Ina and, and land management do you see? What issues around that do you see facing your own district in district three?
Not enough, there you go, not enough education on how to, how to take care of your own, how to sustain your own families. Yeah, everybody's quick to go to, everybody's basically quick, really quick to go to big box stores. Yeah, we had him, and from the big box store, where does everything end up? Right next to, right here, my, my neighborhood, the landfill. We are adjacent to the biggest land, the biggest landfill on this island, yeah, the East Hawaii landfill. When I was young, part of that landfill was our miley patch. That's where we harvested more miley than you could ever, you could ever imagine. And 90% of that miley is gone. The last 10%, I, I don't want to share with anyone. You know, and so that's the one of the issues is how much we depend on everything coming in. Um, just here in our community, we have way more than enough resources to sustain ourselves. Here in the small little homestead, yeah, it's a Hawaiian homestead, we have, we have the we have a lot of kupuna who know how to grow everything from kalo to walla to, you know, we have ulu trees. There's a ulu tree in probably one out of every five residents. And 90% of that ulu just falls to the ground. And that's, that is a huge issue for me, it's been for too long. Um, and the reason why it falls to the ground is because not enough people, you know, not enough people are aware of how how sustain, how, how it could sustain your body, your, in your life. So we talk about healthcare when, when it's time to react rather than be proactive, yeah? Imagine if we, if, you know, a lot of, a lot of those, a lot of the fauna around here and the fruits, it was used by our kupuna, basically, yeah? But now my generation, we just, a lot of them just look past it and you know, oh, ulu on the tree, wow, it's blooming, straight to K T A, you know? Um, and actually, I'd rather not shop at K T A because it's an old, it's an old, you know, it's an old family. The family is from Hilo, from Waikiki Kai, actually. It's, um, it's been here longer than Target, but if you go to Target, Target's a lot more busy, you know, and Target is on Hawaiian homestead land. Yeah, Target, Home Depot, Walmart, all that land there, when I was my, my children's age, it was grass with horses. I miss that. And I wonder, where did that go? You know what I'm saying? So that was a huge spark when I, you know, after high school, I seen that it bulldozed it. You know, and of course I was standing in line for a job at Walmart, never got it. But then it, you know, I look back and say, wow, kind of glad I didn't get that job because I would have never been led on to pursue my passion, which is, which was landscaping. And through, from landscaping, yeah, I said, oh, no, we can't just be growing flowers, one of the flowers that fruit. And so that was my hugest spark, I would have to say, is the amount of waste we we participate in and we also just bypass, yeah, kind of, you know? We just look over like, oh yeah, that's, oh yeah, yeah, tree, about a 500, nobody knows that there's 500 mangoes, you know? From, in a quarter mile distance from my house to, like I said, quarter mile down the street, nobody, like, there's maybe, you know? Let's say five families out of the 30 will look at that tree the same way I do. And that's a huge spark, that's burning me actually.
So on that note, um, one of the issues that it seems like you're bringing up here has to do with zoning. Um, we have, uh, you know, agricultural lands that are being rezoned to residential or commercial. Um, and you know, just to clarify for anybody who watches this, is this, is that something that you support? And if so, why? And if not, why not?
I'm sorry Clara, my mind was on my lighting, I'm so sorry.
So one of the things that you were mentioning with that is just around the zoning.
Right.
Homestead converted to, um, you know, commercial industrial. Is that some, do you support agricultural lands being converted to residential or commercial, um, just so we can
I, I support residential lands turning, going all out agriculture. I'm tired of commercial, you know, um, like I said, there's commercials popping, commercial zoning popping up everywhere. Uh, there was one time where we really thought that they were gonna, where Home Depot is right now. We really thought they were gonna hold, have community guardians, I must have been, I must have been, I was fresh out of high school. And, um, we thought there was gonna be, uh, community guardians where the whole community can go at one time and, and um, do, you know, do gardening and farming from there to the next road, yeah, which is, um, what is that, Poinacol, that Poinacol comes down, all the way up from Komohana. Um, so that, and it involves, you know, where Panaeva was trying to, I don't know if you see where they were right across the long, they were trying to you know, you were trying to get a little community garden there, but now we have a really small and across the home people. Probably a couple of greenhouses, you know? I thought that was, I was part of, you know, the, I don't know how many residents who thought that that was gonna be community gardens and before you know it, um, 10 years later, we have a big Home Depot there. Um, which does not support. I don't see no support for locals, locals to thrive there because we, we've, before they came, we already had enough. What do you call that? Hardware stores, you know? And places where you can buy wood, basically, H P M is one of the biggest, H P M hires um, all, all residents, basically, yeah? H P M is a big, they employ so many people and, and then you have shares in their company and, and that's, that's great. You know, but, um, yeah, I don't support commercial on residential. I'm, I'm trying to focus, I'm trying to you know, I was hoping they'd be focusing that Panaeva egg zone on strictly egg, yeah? Put, put residents in the middle of, in the middle of that egg, in the middle of their egg lot and and if you gotta put, you know, put a couple more on, yeah? Small houses, big land, you know? Now we have big box stores, no land, plenty parking lots, so no, no. I'm sorry for rambling, but like I said, that's, it's just so long that, you know? It's been that way, no, I don't, ever.
Yeah. Do you have another question?
Michaela?
Um, so my question has to do with affordable housing, which is obviously a really huge issue right now. Um, and I brought up the same point in the last interview that we did, um, because me being made a Hawaiian and having an interview with like a fellow Kanakamali person, I'm always interested to hear their specific perspective on this issue. Because for the Kanakamali community, this issue affects the entire state, but for our community, it's especially poignant. Um, so what paradigm shifting solutions can you offer so that rising real estate prices and values do not correspondingly increase the cost of housing and the cost of living? Um, thus pushing out locals and Kanakamali people from the housing market?
Affordable housing starts with financial literacy. I mean, you come out of high school and first thing you think is you gotta go buy a car. You know, with what money? With no credit. I feel like financial literacy is at the base of all of this. I'm sure you guys know, most Hawaiians, I know, they have no financial literacy, yeah? Living paycheck to paycheck, so, um, for me, you know? Maybe I just use myself as a, as, as, um, touches close to home, girl, I'm so sorry, Michaela. Um, as an example, when I, when I built my house, my mortgage was $450 a month in 2000. Um, that's affordable, even till today, you know, even till today. How you make that affordable? How is that affordable? We built it ourselves. Me, my uncle, my, my four cousins, yeah, from the ground up. Uh, grandfather did the plumbing and he was a long time plumbers, he was a long time member of the plumbers union. Yeah, using the resources we have already, that, that's, that's the only way, it's the only way it's gonna happen. That's, that's not the only way it's gonna happen, but it's the, it's a huge way it could happen. We have, we're, we're so, um, what is that word? There's so much Hawaiian men and women in construction, you know? And they are totally, you know, able to build houses and, and do the infrastructure, everywhere you go, you see a Hawaiian on the, on the machine operator position, digging the holes, yeah? Swinging the hammer or not, not the more, the more hammer anymore, everything is nail gun, you know? So, yeah, using the resources we already have, which in, in each other, yeah? Too much hiring out, they're too much, too much, uh, yeah, of course we need permits and we gotta keep standard of a house, but who says? Who says this person cannot build it the same way the other person can, you know? The other, but this contractor can. Why, why we gotta hire, why we gotta hire out all the time, you know? For, so for me, it would be just putting putting the right resources in the right places. Um, not denying Hawaiians the work that they can do. Yeah, so much, so much Hawaiian men are buying houses when they can build their own. Why? Cause they gotta go work because the mortgage that they're about to pay now is what, $2,000, almost $3,000? 2,000, it was my mortgage was $450. That's, it's, it's still possible now, I think, through programs, yeah? Let that, make the administration hold them accountable to know the people, yeah? Know the residents, what do they do? What do they do on a daily basis? Yeah? What is their skills? Yeah? Who, who do, what kind of resources can they share back to each other? Yeah? So, like I said, ownership of homes for our communities is is, is bar none, you know? Yeah, we gotta, the administration gotta learn the community, they gotta connect back to the community and find out what can the community members offer in order to flourish on a housing project, you know? Like, oh, Pepe Kill, I don't know if you guys familiar had that, there was about 10 houses came up, two of them my friends built. It was like, it was a self-help project, right? You guys familiar with that? Yeah, more like that, yeah? Because I know, I know two people very close to my heart who got to be a part of that, that our project and had not, would probably still be renting something way out of their boundaries. And now would be worse with the gas prices and everything else went up, you know? So basically just connecting administration, holding them accountable to know their community members. What is the skills? What is the resource that they can share, put on the table, put in front of them? Yeah?
So switching gears here a little bit, Malani, um, thank you for that answer, of course. Switching gears over to public schools, which is another thing that's near and dear to you, I believe. What measures would you propose to increase the quality of our public school systems?
Gardens. Every school should have their own garden and the county, this is the huge, actually, the county they have to connect real food back into the cafeteria. Yeah, so again, so we can be proactive. It's the, the food that they eat doesn't do nothing for these children. I don't know if you guys see, have you seen the food they eat? I, that, that's, that'll be my first, I would go straight to the food. And I would make sure that there's teachers who can, who can, um, uh, what is that word? Who can advocate for having, you know, fresh food right outside of their classrooms. It's not, it's not impossible. Every class, every school you go on, there's grass forever. And, and there's a, there's a lawnmower going through the school two, three times a month. When the kids could probably be doing that themselves, you know, learning real trade skills while feeding themselves. It's, it's not impossible and our school has an ulu tree, by the way, has two. And, and that was planted years ago when I was a kid. And so I would make sure more schools have, you know, I don't need, we don't do, you need monkeypods. Yeah, not, nobody's using monkey pot, not in the school, but you know? Our children at Keokah school, we're eating ulu every, every season, the whole season. You know, in every way you can, and what did that do for our community? It made the parents want to eat ulu. And that's where it starts right at home, you know? So, yeah, just I would have to start right at the food because you see how kids act and you see how they behave, it's, it's when you look at it, there's no other, there's not a bigger reason than the food they're eating. It's coming out of packages, yeah? It's laced with who knows what types of chemicals. And we were wondering, oh, why we gotta, why we gotta, why is this kid so off the walls all the time? Well, the chemicals he just ate, you know, the, the little, you know? The little things that they have no idea, they think they're eating a, um, what's it called, that bust it out of a little package to get for breakfast, it looks like a cereal muffin. As soon as they're done eating that, they can't even focus. Yeah, so I would start at the food. I would make sure that the cafeteria can connect to the garden in front of the classroom. Every classroom has room for a garden right outside. And I've seen that statewide, I've been through to so much schools, just, you know, I, like you said, I, I go to, um, we have family in Molokai and go to Molokai and I look at the, the elementary school there and they're growing grass just like everybody else. You know, and their kids are, they have the same mental health issues as every, as every other school. Where does it start? Starts in the gut. It's, it's, it's just too far gone, the disconnect between administration and community is way too far gone. They have no idea that what these kids eat. How would they know? Maybe bring them by, let them eat with the kids. You think they would take, take part in that play as, as much as the kids do? No. I don't think so, the children are, the children have no idea, they think we're loving, we think we're giving them love when they, we had them a plate full of cereal muffins and laced, laced meat. They, they really think we love them. Why? Because they, they feel, they feel like, you know, their stomach is full a little while. But they have no idea that they cannot focus because of the chemicals that they just ingested. I would start at the food, right in the cafeteria, girl. Every school would have an emo.
All right, Michaela, our next question.
Okay, so my next question has to do with native Hawaiian rights. Um, and I'm going rogue here a little bit, just asking a question on my own, because this is something that's been weighing on me. Um, so there is a large percentage of the Kanakamali population that is employed in very specific industries. Um, the tourist industry is one, especially working in resorts, construction is another one. Um, and although these fields can be very lucrative at times, it can also be very volatile. Um, in construction, when the money's flowing and it's good, things are really good. Um, if, you know, like you mentioned, financial literacy, if you're not planning accordingly and something happens, you're not getting the money you need, then it can, you know, you're losing income. When COVID happened, even though we, you know, generally, a lot of native Hawaiians do want to move away from tourism. When COVID happened, there were a lot of native Hawaiians that lost income because that's, you know, they were working at resorts and things like that. I've even seen, uh, like, it's now become like an internet, you know, funny thing that Hawaiian women will say that to look for potential spouses or fellow Hawaiian partners, they have to look for the neon shirt. Because they know that most Hawaiian men are gonna be working in construction. So these stereotypes are persisting. Um, what do you think that we can do to provide more stable and more diversified employment opportunities for native Hawaiian men and women besides just like construction or the tourist industry?
Um, so can I, I'm sorry, Michaela, I'm gonna touch base on the native Hawaiian part, is that okay real quick?
Yes, please do.
I don't like the fact that we become native Hawaiian after we sign an amendment for being Hawaiian with America, you understand? I, I, so you hardly ever hear me, you know, you'll never hear me say native Hawaiian rights. I'm, I'm, I'm all about Hawaiian rights, that's for sure, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, get over that, now I can get over that real quick, I'm sorry, but
No, I, that's, that's That's an important distinction, I'm glad that you brought that up because, you know, in, um, back when, you know, prior to the, the annexation, when they asked all Hawaiians stand up, Sanford B. Dole actually stood up because he considered himself to be nationally Hawaiian. So there's a def, there's a difference between, you know, I think this, that also feeds more into like the sovereignty movement, but there is a difference between, you know, these terms are kind of nuanced and people use them but, you know, we can say Kanakamali rights. But, you know, we can say Kanakamali rights.
Ah, too good you got, I like that. So, well, for me, one thing about Hawaiian rights is it's it's it's. It's put in a box. You know what I mean? It's this pretty thing that we we put over here and we say, oh, Hawaiian rights. Yeah, we wanna make. We should have rights to our mountain, not the telescopes. Um, or, you know, everything, there's there's so much Hawaiian rights seems like it's it's a pretty thing. I don't know if you catch what I'm trying to say. Um, I kinda wrote it. I made sure. It doesn't, it doesn't live in a box, basically, Hawaiian rights, yeah? It, everything should be treated as should be a right to Hawaiians, yeah? Mental health. That's crazy. The amount of mental health that's, you know, mental health, drugs, you know, all of these. Uh so many issues with Hawaiians that that um, we can talk about where. None of our rights is gonna matter. Because we put, I feel like we put Hawaiian rights too much in a box, like, oh, it's about, you know, taking care of the. The fish ponds. It's about um, ma la ma ina. I don't know, I think Hawaiian rights should be uh, it should be circulated on everything we do, you know what I mean? And so like you said, um, how how are we gonna offer more opportunities for Hawaiian men? Hawaiian or Hawaiian people? Well, let's. Let's talk, let's connect to the community again. Same thing, let's connect back to the community, let's. Let's um nurture them from when they're young, so we see what they're really interested in. Yeah, like my kids, all three of my children, I know everything they're interested in, yeah? And it's if if any politician came here and asked me, what is your, what are your children interested in? Let's see what we can do for them. I, that guy's gonna get my vote automatic. Yeah, because there's not one politician, there's not one administration person that asks that question. What are Hawaiian children passionate about? What do they wanna practice? Yeah, why is, why is canoe paddling and racing uh the sport of racing canoes a three-month thing? Why can't it be a, why can't it be an all-year thing? Yeah, and what would that do? That would make us proactive with our health. Yeah, we take us back to proactive again with health. Um, yeah, we, a lot of Hawaiian people um. Are construction workers, but a lot of those construction workers, they don't, they're not feeding themselves the right thing. You know what I'm saying? So I think we gotta, I feel like administration has to get into the community and figure out what. What do these residents, what do these residents do? What do they wanna do? What what are they really passionate about? Yeah? Not, turn off the TV and, you know? Get get back to reality and stop wasting our time, you know what I mean? Like, it's it's, Hawaiian rights gotta get out of the box. I think so. And be an all-around thing, Michaela, you know? It's all, I cannot handle how it's just this thing right here. Sorry for never answering your question.
No, 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 they answered my question and you know, I've said this before, I'll say this again, everybody answering in their most authentic way is the most important. You know, we're all about voter transparency and people being able to see that. Candidates are real people with real emotions and real thoughts and feelings. It's your authentic, your real feelings, your your thoughts. That's what we wanna share and what we wanna foster. So thank you so much for your answer, Malani.
Yeah.
Hand it over to Claire now.
Yeah, I just wanna build on something that you mentioned about um mental health. Um, and I think that that's such a big, you know, big part of a lot of these issues we've been talking about. Um, and so I just, more of a broad question, I'm just, what what solutions could you? Provide um on the county level to try and combat the the, you know, drug crisis, methamphetamine crisis? And just general mental health um holistically?
Yeah, the rehabilitation of of the land. Yeah, getting the people back on the land, that put in, put in the people. Put in the land first, you know, getting, I think the more, I've always thought this. You know, the more closer you are to the land, the the dirtier your hands are, the cleaner your soul becomes. How do I know that? Because I've I've once felt depressed. Yeah, I've once shared that emotional disconnect with my family, you know? I've once felt that spiritual disconnect with my place, yeah? And how did, how did I combat that? Combated that by turning my my hand back into the soil. I'm so glad that landscaping found me and um, a mentor of mine, Jimmy Nanioli. So glad he found me in high school, yeah? He told me, hey, you, get up, move ya. Took me to his class. I was running amok, you know, misbehaving like the rest of my friends. Yeah, trying to cut school to go surf. You know, trying to go to seven eleven to buy a slurpee. That's what happened. I'm trying to go to seven eleven to buy a slurpee. Jimmy Nanioli pulled me aside, he said, what you gonna do? Uh, I didn't know what to say, right? He's a teacher. Uh, he said, you get over here. Took me to his classroom. There was a three-hundred-pound pig that he was, that that him and his students is raising. Yeah, and outside of, out on the outskirts of that, his pigpen, you know? There was gardens and there was trellises with tomatoes and and it just. To me at the moment, that was, that was the, you know, that was my grandfather's yard. I was like, hey, this is like my papa's yard. You know, I got all, I got connected and I just was like, wow. Can I stay here? And he's like, of course you can stay. I said, because I was gonna cut class and I wasn't coming back. So might as well I just stay in your class for the rest of the day, right? And so I connected with him right there and I stayed there. And I wouldn't go class for the next couple of days and he's like, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get in trouble, you know? And so what happened there for me was rehabilitation, I think. And then, of course, I got disconnected for a little while, but then, you know? I pursued my my passion in landscaping and from there on, you know, I remember my dad doing a lot of kalo and. My grandpa raising rabbits and chickens and, you know, and vegetables in our backyard and. And it started my own little garden and and from there on, you know? I feel like just mentally, I was a lot more connected to to my family and then once that happened. Connected back to, like, I got really connected to my community and I was like, hey, I'm gonna be a teacher. I'm gonna be just like Uncle Jimmy. I'm gonna make sure these Hawaiian boys don't get all messed up, you know what I mean? And so I, so lucky for me, you know, he found me. Because I feel like every day I get to rehabilitate myself through that, to the land. And, you know, um, I walk around my, I I walk around our garden in the school without, I don't, I don't, I goes. I go to work barefooted. Yeah, and and, you know, a lot, a lot of times, you know, the students who don't know, they'll be like. Hey, uncle, you cannot, how come you stay barefoot? And I look at them, I go, because our garden is so clean. Yeah, it's gonna help clean me. And what do you think they wanna do? They'll take off their slippers and shoes too, you know? And and right away, you just, you can see them connect and you can see them already stand taller and. You know, they talk a little clearer and I've always believed in that, always, always, always. Like I said, I I I've experienced it myself, you know? It it, it did something, it it did something for me spiritually, it did something for me, it connected me again. Yeah, connecting me spiritually, mentally, emotionally, yeah? Eighteen, seventeen, eighteen years old, I was a wreck. Yeah, but seeing that three-hundred-pound pig being raised by a bunch of. Guys that I thought was, you know, thought was little gangsters, who was actually, they were actually uh, you know? Agriculture students. I got all, you know, I got really inspired. And so for a very long time, I've always thought that. The way, the way we could help people heal is just getting their hands dirty, yeah? Dirty in what? Soil. Yeah, there's there's no better soil than ours, even if it's rocks. And you, you grab about ten blue rocks from Kilkau and you, you know, you make you a little wall, put. Something and put some food inside, you grow some seeds inside and before you know it, you're like, you're too tired to act up. You're too tired to think of stupid things, you know? So, it's it's easy. People make it too hard. Keep it simple. It's one of my best slogans ever, yeah? Keep it simple. How I know that, how I know I, how I know I can affect people like that? My own son, look at his Instagram page, his profile says, keep it simple. Did I tell him to do that? No. You know, lucky, lucky me, he was paying attention, you know what I mean? And so, yeah, I I even with my business, people tell, oh, you know, we like your clothes, it's so simple. So, yeah, life is simple. People make it hard, you know? How, why, why, why is mental health such an issue? Because the world is too complex. Yeah, people feel the need to go from their house to the big box store and back. Well, that's gonna take set six, seven bucks now, just to go there and back, if that's ten miles, right? Yeah, with the price of gas. That'll cause you to go mentally ill, you know what I mean? That'll, that'll, that'll put a little dent in your in your mind and make it a little, make your day a little harder, that's for sure. But if they would just, you know, plant the seed, yeah, plant twenty. How, how hard is that? Not hard at all. How much does it cost? Free. Yeah, especially if, you know, somebody like me lives in your community, right? And I, and I'm not the only one in this community, this, you know, it's, it's a bunch of us, we're just. It's overlooked, I think, you know? But yeah, I think. Getting your hands dirty in soil, it'll put your mind back straight and get your body tired. Yeah, lie down by nine o'clock and you'll be out by nine fifteen for sure.
Thank you. All right, we have time for one more question. Right on, Jeff.
Okay, I feel like um a lot of pressure now. I had a, I had a question, but now I know it's the last question. I'm like, oh, why?
It's our last interview, so.
Okay, okay.
You're welcome to.
This question, this question has to do with uh land use and development. So um, telescopes, construction sites and commercial activities in many areas of Hawaii island have been carried out. In areas zoned as conservation. Do you believe that these special use permits are hindering our capacity to preserve our ina and why?
I, that's a good question. Something I really like, even though I feel like I think about it a lot, it's like, where does that, you know, where does that answer lie, right?
Right.
I think too much private organization, yeah, too much, there's too much private organizations offering to, you know, to make better. There's a lot of private organizations out there that that gives us the opportunity to to do better on our land, yeah? But what happens? The county cannot connect the community to that private organization. I feel like, and then what happens there? The opportunity runs away. And so now, of course, they're gonna zone it different, yeah? Because there's, when you look at it, there's so much um private entities that wanna pre- preserve land. You know, whether it's here, it's Kohala, it's, I don't know, it's Kahuku, you know, all over, yeah? You know, like, we'll find out when the windmills are going up, right? That's when we'll find out, but who's who's behind the windmills? And nobody knows, yeah? And then by the time the, time that happens, it's like, there's too much questions to ask. And so. Um. I don't like, I don't like, uh, I don't wanna say I don't support um private organizations. Because there's a lot of them that that really wants to help. I I feel like in in my. You know, in the in the time that I've been so passionate about the land, I've seen, I feel like I've seen so much come and go. Without being able to help in the correct way. Why? Because not enough residents or community members know about these these private organizations who. Who wanna help preserve these lands for their use. Yeah, so what happens now? Well, another private organization comes in and says, oh, we're gonna build something here. And then now everybody wants to preserve the land. It's too late already, you know? It's, administration has 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 caused the disconnect again. And I. I feel like we. I always felt this way, I basically is, there's just too much disconnect. Between co- county government and community. So of course, a lot of the private organizations that wanna preserve these lands, you know? Whether it be for this or that, who knows? Yeah, whatever reason it is, we know us residents, community members, we find out too late what they really wanna. Uh, I think we should be, we should be informed the the moment they they know. Who wants to preserve what, for what reason, and put us, make us a part of it. So that everybody can 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 talk about supporting or not, you know? It's 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 too far disconnected between government and community that. It's, it's a bad stigma with private organizations already. Yeah, it's, oh, just another big private organization, you're gonna say they're gonna preserve that land, but. You're gonna see a one caretaker on there and that caretaker is not gonna let us come on the land anymore. Yeah, that's 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 the administration's fault, you know what I mean? I think so. From what I've seen for the many years, it's just so many of them have the good, the the best intentions. And we never find out about it. So, it's a hard question to answer.
No, you did good, you did good.
It's a really hard question to answer. Yeah, I'm gonna support this, but no, I don't support that one, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, do you have another question?
No, I I mean, I didn't, I didn't prepare enough.
Okay, thank you very much, Malani, for joining us. Uh, really appreciate your time today. Thank you, Michaela and Claire, for conducting the interview. Uh, we're building something that the Hawaii political establishment has never seen, a slate of pono leaders. Your donation can help Huli the system. Uh, if you'd like to get some more information or make a donation. Then please visit our website, hulihi.com, that's H U L I H I dot com. Thanks again.
Right on, Jeff. Thanks, but yeah, I thank you guys for the opportunity.